I would like to probably go over your Warren Regional School Committee meeting to order. And I think you should all be very happy to be air-conditioned for this committee. Funny, I just said the same thing.
Oh, you did. And I'd like to acknowledge all the effort that Richard had done those years past.
Thank you very much.
Because I can only imagine what would be on our agenda today if we hadn't done that.
In fact, as I was coming here, I was saying to myself, whatever it was, three years ago, four years ago, we were having this meeting tonight in this room. It would be unbearable and so noisy for the fans, we wouldn't be able to do business. And that's just us. Anyway, thank you very much.
And you are ready to solicit any community comments if you have anything to add? Okay, not seeing any. We want to move on to the third agenda item. And I'll let you take that over.
Thank you, Michael. Good evening, everyone. Agenda item three is the FY15 budget closeout. And in your packets, Hans provided a number of documents for your review. And he will take the time to go through those. And so you have a clear picture of where we stand with the FY15 budget. Hans?
Good evening. One of the things I want to ask is, as I go through this, not to be my first closeout, not even my budget. Again, this is what we, Superintendent and I, looked at, thought we might provide. If you wanted to change anything, as in you need more information, you'd like to see more information. I know there was a lot more of a narrative in past reports, went on for pages and pages. We can do that, too. It's up to you, whatever you would like to see, or if this is good enough. And then ask questions when you get here, that's fine, too. So let's walk our way through it, and we'll go from there. Exhibit A is the reconciliation of the general fund. We talked about this. So we've seen this once, for those of you that were at the summer meeting. And the exhibit highlights the FY15 fiscal results. And these are the ones that will be submitted to the Department of Revenue for the certification of our existent deficiency fund. What I wanted to point out here, and again, we'll see this again when we get to the source of revenues, is that due mainly to a surplus in Chapter 70. In 71 state funds over budget, surplus in the region operating budget versus budget, the district hit the upper limit of its allowed 5% E&amp;D limitation. The result is a potential E&amp;D, and I guess you used the word give back. I don't think you've done that in the past, at least not in the last six to seven years, to the towns of approximately 60,488. And again, this number is pending DOR certification. They may find something that they want to disallow, or is not to their liking, but you would change that number. Last year, there was a small disallowance of like $4,000, so there really wasn't a huge swing in that number. And our Treasurer, Jim Egger, assures me that there shouldn't be anything else, based on the conservatism of how he puts the numbers together. The administration is recommending that this amount over the 5% limitations be returned to the towns. Again, and my note, no school committee vote necessary to return these funds, since once the DOR certifies this and sees that we're over, they're automatically going to, what are us to return the funds to the town? Unless, at this point, before we submit them to the Department of Revenue, you'd want to make some changes in terms of how the monies work, process, I guess is the best word. So again, and then there's a lot of information here. And we talked about showing this maybe once or twice a year, or earlier, to see how E&amp;D is tracking. But at the end of the year, most definitely, a one-page synopsis of where we stand and what made up those items. You know, from top to bottom, you've got the undesignated in the column with all the numbers in it, the undesignated fund balance. You've got your revenues, you've got your expenditures. Then across the way down, you see the use of E&amp;D, transferring out 250 to fund the regional transportation reserve fund. Again, also use of E&amp;D to add $50,000 to the unemployment revolving fund. Revised E&amp;D, as of 6/30, again, nothing has really changed since then significantly. A potential amount over the 5% limitation. What we were waiting for at the time, which we didn't know, was when they did the 9C cuts to your regional transportation, they cut you by 114,000. We didn't quite know whether we'd get the entire amount back. We found out that we were going to get something back. We ended up getting 34 back. So when you add that back in, that's the A down there, you see the potential give back of 64,88. That would represent 32,388 for the town of Dover and 28,060 for the town of Sherburne, based on the assessment percentages and the formulas. Again, I hope, I think most of you have seen this already. If those of you haven't, you can ask questions, and we can talk about other issues.
So I follow that one. Michael, do you want to let us know, the last discussion at our last meeting about possibly using this money for capital projects? And I know we have that educate report and that kind of thing. So has other discussion occurred on that?
No, I think our, the sequence, and I last recollected, was we would get through December, January, the time when, you know, Governor was to announce 9C cuts, they would announce them. If it looked like that that was not going to be an issue, then we would systematically underspend our transportation account by $250,000.
No, I think you misunderstood. I had assumed that we were talking about the $60,000 that should go to capital projects as well.
In other words, instead of giving anything back.
Right.
Diverted to our capital expenditure.
Well, I think it's more, I think that I'm not sure. I don't think that was necessarily a discussion that Dana and I were on track for, nor did I hear necessarily that type of.
Can I, because I wasn't at that meeting, I guess was, what, in July or whatever it was. And I know I had the minutes, and somewhere I'm probably in a rhythm. Can somebody recap what, if anything, happened at that meeting, these of these funds, anything?
In the July meeting, we had the June meeting, where the concept of the Reserve Transportation Fund and putting money into an unemployment reserve was raised. Then the timeframe then shortly thereafter is when the Governor, the new Governor, announced some restoration of monies that had been taken away. So that's what then triggered us to say, oh, in July, we need to revisit this, make sure people are at least aware of that new information. No decisions were made then, because you were gone, Dana was gone, in the middle of the summer.
It was a discussion that we could make a motion and raise the cap on the transportation about using money for capital. Or giving back to the town. Those were the three, the three things discussed.
At this time, we were waiting on a recommendation from Bill and Hans to say we're getting settled into their new roles. So I take, this is their recommendation at this time. I did not necessarily sense that we would, in this short notice, investigate any other uses of the 60,000. I just did not go away from that last meeting.
That's what I assumed you guys were.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, what's our timeline here for making a decision, both on the 250,000, and for that matter, the 50,000, and on the 60,000?
Well, I think you've already made your decision on the 250 and the 50, unless you want to change them, and that would require a different vote.
See, that's what I was asking. I don't recall.
We voted in.
We did.
Not to exceed the 250, not to exceed 50.
Oh, wait up there.
We didn't, in June, we didn't have a final number. Chris wasn't ready, because all of the expense side of this, she was still. So we knew we were heading in this direction of being in a position to use something like the Reserve Transportation Fund. And again, at least, my comment at that time was, this is essentially a parking measure for us to revisit later in this fiscal year, as we have more information when we release our state aid. And it's all on the table about ways to use that money and be engaged in transparent processes about that.
So your thought, I don't want to dominate the discussion here, but your thought is that the 250,000 then that is sitting there, that is parked there, is in some senses just an escrow, not for, not necessarily for, well, I guess it is, for a rainy day when we find.
The first rainy day moment we would know, my understanding is usually December and January, is if there is a change in the state budget, and that predicates the Governor to make 9C cuts, that's the time period you can learn of those things. Now, in June, everything looked great in the state. You know, late August, we saw that financial markets can get a little jittery, too. Who knows? I mean, none of us can predict the future.
And what this really means is the reserve fund that we've set up, that money actually has to go to transportation, if I read that correctly.
Correct.
And it would free up other E&amp;D money to use on some kind of.
Because we've fully budgeted for this current fiscal year, our expected transportation needs, then later on, decided to invoke this option, we will systematically underspend our transportation budget, operating budget, by $250,000. Is that the?
And to answer your question, yes, this is an insurance policy against regional transportation 9C cuts. If nothing happens and everything worked out, we would spend this down, you'd have that benefit next year, dropping that all down into E&amp;D. Because you'd spend this first, not spend your appropriation money, so, you know, either way, it would go back.
And the other item that is pending Bill and Hans settling in their new roles is a review of past events when there have been 9C cuts. What is the level of magnitude? Putting more precision over what a right level of amount is to be, you know, conservatively used as an insurance policy. All of this came up very quickly at the end of last year, with a different business manager and then proceeded to this.
So Michael, or Hans, probably, the 60,448, is our best estimate of what that number will be once certified, correct? So that number could go up or could go down.
Generally goes down.
By a little bit.
By a little bit. Yeah.
And the formula you've used to assess it back to the town is the operating assessment for FY15, correct?
Yes.
And I would ask, then if we're going down that path, we document that at the records? And perhaps even have a motion after having had issues here at the region as to which formula we're using to pay back money to the towns? And I'm not saying we're going to have an issue there, but there is that history there, so to document what method we're using to pay back that money?
A motion makes sense, because then the people that debate it are minutes. And sometimes most of it gets a, there needs to be something.
Just a couple of comments. So I think, even though it's clear that the committee does not technically have to take any action on the so-called give back, I think, after thinking about it, I think it would be helpful to make some kind of a motion. And I've quickly drafted some language that I think would make sense, should the committee decide to do that. And then documenting, you know, what model was used. I would defer to Hans on that, in terms of how we do that.
Right, it's the operating assessment.
I would assume that, yeah, that's the assumption, right. I just want to be clear. The FY15 closeout assumptions that Hans and I made in putting together this information assumed that the committee's previous action of up to 250,000, so we assumed the 250 into the Regional Transportation Reserve Fund would remain, as well as the $50,000 into the Unemployment Compensation Fund. And we did not, we have not had any conversations with any of the capital committees about using that, those surplus, FY15 surplus funds, if you will, for other uses beyond returning them to the two communities. So we just haven't had those conversations.
I did pick Eric to this this morning. Eric Siri, of Sherburne Capital Committee. And I reached out to Bob, again, under the context of trying to understand and pick out key dates for our capital budget process. But because I knew that this is a unusual situation, to make him aware that we were in, that this is how we came up financially. So at that side, one point.
Yeah, I do have a question. We met on, I think it was like the first week of August, and we talked about the $250,000 transferred, up to 250,000 is how it's been referred to. And we asked at that time from both Dover Warren and Sherburne Advisory, if there was some sort of analysis as what the typical cuts are, because 250 just seemed like an extraordinarily large amount compared to what you've had for cuts in the past. And why put the entire maximum in there if you're not going to need it? It just seems like that money would be better spent, or better returned to the towns and the taxpayers, rather than having it sit in an additional E&amp;D fund per year.
Let me, I'd like to respond now. I was going, I have one more note to make. We got in the Regional Transportation Fund. We all need to be very clear that, that once the fund is established and regional transportation reimbursement, Chapter 71 funds are deposited into it, that fund can only be used to pay for regional transportation costs. My feeling, my belief at this point is that it makes sense at this point to fund it at the $250,000. And what that will lead to, given, given the limits on how that fund can be used, that can, that can become further discussion around the budget development process. And that gives both the regional district and the two towns a little bit of flexibility, frankly, there. In terms of the research, I will tell you, I spent a considerable time doing Google searches. And the best I could find is that there were 9C cuts in FY, for the FY13 state budget, there were 9C cuts in FY09. There may have been other 9C cuts in between. And DC doesn't have the Chapter 71 information on their website indicating whether Chapter 71 cuts were part of those 9C cuts. Clearly, we know that they were in FY15. Furthermore, there's been, there's been a lot of work done by the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools on the issue of regional transportation, and whether the Governor actually has the ability to include Chapter 71 cuts as part of 9C cuts. Although nothing has been put in writing, Governor Baker has indicated that in the future, if there are 9C cuts, and the legislature, the government does not have the, under 9C, does not have the ability to cut Chapter 70 payments to towns, only the legislature can do that. But if Chapter 70 monies are not cut because of a budget issue, then he has indicated that Chapter 71 would not be cut. And there's, you know, there's a statute that goes back to 2010, which took the Chapter 70 funds out of the Governor's hands, in terms of 9C. And there was language in there that indicated that if Chapter 70 funds were, that Chapter 71 cuts could only be made at the same percentage as Chapter 70 cuts. So there's been a lot of conversation since last November, certainly around the regional school level, with the legislature and the government's office, as to what that language actually means. So going forward, Governor Baker has indicated that if Chapter 70 is not cut, then regional transportation will not be cut. However, that doesn't help us with past history and trying to figure out what the average, if you will, of those cuts have been. We're still continuing to try to research that. I have a call into the Finance Office at the Department of Elementary-Secondary Education. Unfortunately, the individual, Jay Sullivan, deals with regional transportation, has just been out of the office for the last couple of weeks. But we'll continue to pursue that.
So one other question on that. Specific to your request, though, I envision that being rolled into this coming year's budget development process. And it's just an open issue for the region, and with input from the financial committees, as to what is the right way to work on this. Just from my perspective, it was, it was an unfortunate timing of getting information late, having a complete turnover in key roles as the Superintendent and Business Manager. And in a sense, this just gives us some time on the clock to better address this in the department budget process.
Just one other question to understand the transportation fund. You said it can only be used for transportation uses, but if it's not used, it's then rolled into E&amp;D, correct?
You have to use, the monies that are put into that fund are used, fiscal, they're used first.
They have to be used in that first, not.
They're gone. Your first bunch of bills, like, you empty that fund, basically. So the money.
Exactly. So the money. But then if you don't use your budget numbers, that gets rolled into E&amp;D.
There you go. That falls, that falls to the bottom line.
I tried to walk right with the counsel, but. So again, I think that this is, to me, in my view at least, it's a holding pattern. We roll it into this coming budget process. We have the central office and our team to understand where we are financially and where what we'll need to do for this coming set of budgets. And then we all have a discussion about various ways to work through this fortunate situation of two months.
Yeah, I just, you know, I think, I think what this takes is, is further discussion and understanding, total understanding of how the Regional Transportation Fund has to work according to the department's guidelines. And, you know, in the advisory that was in your packet, it's clear that, and it says, funds carried over from the previous fiscal year must offset the next fiscal year's transportation assessments. So again, that will certainly be part of the budget discussion and part of the budget development process. And it will be an interesting discussion, because in previous years, regional transportation has been fully funded through the appropriation. So that there will be a difference there. We know what the regional transportation cost will be for next year, because we have a budget, we have a bus contract in place. And assuming things stay the same, in terms of number of buses and routes, we know what the cost is. And so we can estimate what the Chapter 71 number will be. There's a number in the state budget now. It's approaching, if there are no cuts, somewhere between 70 and 73% reimbursement, if I'm not mistaken. Believe that's the number. So that will allow us to have a little more focused discussion when we come to the budget time, if we have this money, I mean, any amount of money, actually, in the account. But. So what committee members, are you following that?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think to answer your initial question, though, there was that $60,000. That was really the question mark when we were leaving for the summer. And we haven't moved forward with that, other than to say capital is, we've met with Bill and Hans, and we're going to pursue a subcommittee in capital, including some of the wellness folks, if we can, in order to better understand that advocate report, to see if, to have a conversation about that in capital, as opposed to. A subcommittee, to the subcommittee? Yeah. But it's not, but it's $60,000 now.
So specific to the.
I'm a little expert on the advocate.
So specific to the food facilities in Lundquist, we have historically funded any of the capital improvements out of the revolving fund. So there's nothing, there's nothing that's been on our capital account, at least in several years that I had been.
Of the inside on site.
There's nothing on the onsite insight. And so then the question is, does this advocate report plus the issues of wellness, is that going to trigger something that didn't fit into that pattern of spending? And that's why Richard and Laurie took on some summer homework.
I got my notes in the later to meet your capital generally, whatever.
Really? Our next meeting is when we should, we see a review of those little projects.
Right. Thank you, Michael.
Mary?
I think it's just worth noting that, with all the concern about cuts, that had none of the cut money been restored, the line item fund would have still been in excess of $14,000. So if no cuts had been restored, that line item still would have had a $14,000 unencumbered remainder to it. So the, you know, we're, I'm hearing a lot of talk about cuts, but even if, and, you know, we got back 34,000 instead of 114,000, but the 114,000 was never included in the original appropriation. That money was cut before the budget was approved by the towns. And the amount of money that we got back, yeah, even if we had got none of the cuts back, we still would have had in excess of $14,000.
We just didn't have a visibility to that in June, when Chris was working on closing the book. So their best estimate was 300,000, plus or minus.
Yeah, I'm just saying that, you know.
Well, in many lines, that's a simple.
Right. I mean, it's just that they, even without the cut money coming back, the cuts were not devastating, because even without money coming back.
For purposes of prognostication, there's another data point that this year, in fact, we had already budgeted.
That's right.
A little extra, more than.
Exactly.
So my question, I'm sorry.
Did you have a comment, Mary?
No, I was going to say, what does the region, what are you looking for us to do?
Well, I listened to our financial committee, Lee.
So when you say it'll be discussed during the budget process, how to manage this $250,000 if there's any remaining of it, whatever? What is, what is specific that that means? Does that mean, for example, the budget that is drafted for December or end of November, whatever, whatever their timeline is, will have a proposal for how to use it? Or does that mean it will be something that there's conversation about? Because I think that, as a, I think the finance committees are interested in being part of the conversation. And I think the way this played out this year, you made some votes, went the same day we learned about it, in terms of the money being available. And so there was no time to go to our committees, have conversation, get preferences, really think about it. And I think we all want to really think about these things. I don't think anybody wants to move quickly when we can take our time. I don't think anybody wants to move quickly when we can take our time. And so the timing was unfortunate. So I'm asking then, thinking forward, you know, if something comes with a proposal, will that, if you, for example, put it in the draft budget, this is what we think should happen, will that be something that we, we have conversation about as opposed to assume that that's the recommendation and we don't want to challenge it? And I'm just being really, you know, kind of direct because I think that we want to be part of the conversation. We don't want to be late to the table. We don't want to interrupt a process you already had, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, we could use our October meetings at each of the financial committees to begin that discussion and take that back to the budget development process, which then we'd come back to the region to weigh in on that as well.
But we'll hear from capital in October.
Yeah, but.
So then they can take that away, have some thought about it. And then on the other November meeting, we would all have that discussion together. We wouldn't go off and have lots of separate meetings going on.
Again, I don't think, I think we need to walk our way through this and then there's a commitment to have dialogue. Again, the timing of whether we would actually need to tap our reserve, we would not have information till December or January, but we can talk about scenarios in advance in a way that brings the regional school committee members along and in both financial committees. Again, I think this is, we're making this up as we go along at the moment. Let's be, there's no other way to describe this.
I would think, hopefully, nothing is as last minute as June is because.
The regional school committee members.
This, hopefully, we have control. Right, it's just the way it played out. I think we have that.
No, Dana, Dana and I had only had four days' advance notice.
Yes, I think we can have a conversation about this every meeting, you know, before the budget is present, first draft is presented, and then every other meeting, whether it's a regional school committee meeting or meetings with the finance committee about this. But my assumption going forward is that when this regional school committee gets the first draft of the budget, which will be end of November, very first of December, there will be assumptions included in that budget about the regional transportation fund. And it could be, I would imagine, for example, if we estimate that the, and these aren't real numbers. If the, if the cost to fund regional transportation for next year is estimated to be $500,000, then $250,000 of that cost might come from the regional transportation fund. Or whatever the difference is between what is anticipated to be received in Chapter 71 and the balance of the regional transportation fund. It might be that the assumption is, let's use a lot of that money, but hold something back in case there are cuts in Chapter 71. So that's how I would see it going. And then there would be a couple of months of discussion opportunities around just that one item. But certainly, I'm moving forward under the assumption that finance committees, well, first, regional school committee members will be asking questions about almost every line item in the budget, not just regional transportation. So I think there'll be plenty of opportunities to discuss the fine details of the budget.
So what may make sense is, assuming your schedule's permitted, we spend a little time just discussing scenarios and maybe sketch those out and then figure out a way to bring those scenarios back to begin engaging people. Yeah.
So.
Sorry.
Will you make a motion?
Well, no, I think our motion should hand the final sign off by the Department of Revenue. And that would be in October, we would have that final number and then we would just validate it in a motion for.
Or we could make a motion that says, when, when our number is certified, the excess that we need to find something to deal with is returned once, according to the FY15 operating assessment format and the conference, whatever, regional agreement.
So why don't we just wait till we have the final numbers in October?
I agree with you.
Me too.
Because we need the number to tell, that's what we're going to do.
Well, I think, well.
We have to do it anyway, right?
So is there an alternative proposal around using this residual in a manner other than current accounts?
Well, if you wait till it's certified, you have.
No, right now, I'm asking, I'm having a problem with the number of members that we have here tonight.
No.
No, I'm not.
No, I mean, it's.
And I think it's a perfectly smart idea to wait until we have an actual number and we can vote on the actual number. It's small, you know, small change, relatively speaking. It's not as though we need to rush by the day to give it back to the towns. As soon as we know what the number is, it'll go right there.
Then we will validate.
And I also would like to note that it doesn't surprise me should we get other money in another year for a state coming to us. It's not a precedent setting.
Every year is different, so.
Right, exactly right. And you're gonna, you're gonna have the same question every year unless, and again, the reason you hit it this year is because you hit the cap, the maximum 5% cap.
Right, but a lot of times we say, well, that was our past practice. I don't want to say.
And I think there's nothing about what's going on, it feels like we're saying the practice.
So I think you have two options for tonight. You can hold and wait to take any motion until we receive a DOR certification. However, your motion at that point will be, DOR is going to tell us you have this money left over. It has to be returned to the towns. You could take a proactive motion tonight that might read something like, is the intention of the regional school committee to return to the towns of Dover and Sherborne $6,448 as a result of an FY15 surplus? Final amount to be certified by DOR.
Sixty. I like that, sixty.
Did I say $6,448? That would just have slipped.
So I, I mean, this was what Dana was made aware of, you know, last week. I think that Laurie and Richard are comfortable with us committing to a process that a residual number is finally calculated and we remit it and then we'll just formalize this in October.
It seems cleaner. I like it better. The other one is too clear. I don't think we need it.
The only thing I needed to know was, exactly what Michael just talked about. I want to file these numbers, you know, we don't want to do something so that there'll be no residual left over, regardless, we're going to, we turn it to the towns, whatever that number may be.
Right.
So.
Because DOR tells you to do it, you could actually do it before we need. And I would like it on record as to how we're doing it before we do it. That's, that's really my hope.
DOR will tell us the amount that needs to be remitted.
Right, and then not telling us.
It's our responsibility to do the research and confirm the actual percentage used.
Right.
And that would be part of the motion in October is those percentages.
Which is why, which is why I'm asking, is that we can do that before he does it rather than after.
I think we've reached a point where, if you want to make a motion clear, you should make one, but I'm not sure it's going to go through. I think we've got differences of opinion up here.
No, I think you want to make sure we have an agreement around the percentage of how it gets remitted between town A and town B, right?
Not an agreement that we know in the record how we're going to.
Yeah, now some point in October is that what gets memorialized.
Not noting the agreement, it's about noting the method.
Absolutely. That's, I heard, that's what I heard, yeah. Another, another component of that package was the actual line item final numbers for expenditures. Were there any, any questions or was everyone comfortable with how that was noted and presented?
So that's Exhibit B.
And Exhibit B actually ties to Exhibit A. You want to go through the numbers, fine, which was quite nice for me.
So, so we'll, the legal expenses, um, we have money ceiling there, which is a little unusual, except.
Which one do you like as legal cert?
Legal services.
For school committee? And a citizen's income?
No, no, legal, that's all legal services, right.
Low than anticipated legal expenses, I guess, not as much litigation.
Um, and then the substitutes.
Yes.
It's not that we underbudgeted it, right? It's that there were more unexpected leads than, you know, I assume we sort of hit a number everyone's not budgeted as numbers, based on experience.
You would want to go back historically and look at it, then you'd want to take out unexpected things, like you say, long-term subs that came in as a result of an illness that you weren't anticipating. That's always the killer. Again, my experience has been that school districts historically underfund that. And the number is higher, so it always comes up. So you're always watching it monthly to make sure that you're not going to overshoot it or you have money in another place to cover it.
Okay, the bottom line, but literally, figuratively, is we did. I mean, we had enough money in our accounts to actually.
Exactly right.
Yeah.
Assuming there's not any other questions about this schedule. I know in past years, I think we voted to do offsets, or is that not?
We used to vote line item transfers.
My predecessor said that you haven't, she had it in last year's. It really wasn't a voting of line item transfers. And again, you can do it or you can't do it. It's up to you how you wish to do it. I can go either way with it.
District can tell us last year.
Mm-hmm.
We didn't. I mean, we're really presented with a list of those transfers.
Of the transfers?
We got a lot of rubber stamp.
So is there a legal?
There's no legal, no, there's no legal basis to do it.
So now we're in, now we are in an issue of practice.
To practice, yes. Yeah, no, I agree. We both have the same question. We're going to be addressed to what the practice of the district committee had been in terms of approving line item transfers. So it's not a legal requirement that the committee vote to do that?
Is this a trivial amount of work to generate these things for us?
It's not a lot of work. I just, I've always questioned from my perspective what the value of it is, you know?
I think the only value really is retrospective accountability in some senses for us because if we're seeing year after year, lots of different accounts that are under or over budgeted to large amounts, we're not really doing our job, which is to say, holding you guys accountable for bad rest.
And I agree with you. And, but, you know, that's why I like this presentation because once you do the transfers, it wipes everything to zero. So this is, from your perspective, right, this is the one that you want to look at.
Yeah.
To say, wait a minute, why did that, why did Texas give them a X amount under, you know, all that kind of stuff.
Right, and we, and we see those, I guess, monthly or, you know, every other month.
Exactly.
And they're valuable, especially as, you know, we keep a pulse of what's going on. I don't think, I think it's probably a good idea, actually, at least for this year, to follow that practice, to make sure that we have those and that we do rubber stamp those transfers. Because I think, I think we've done so and until I find out that I really want to stick a lot of it this time.
Many years ago, we used to actually do them in June. So was there a policy?
In June? How did you do it in June if you didn't have a.
We did a preliminary in June and then we did the final in September.
Yeah, once, the way, another, you can do it as often as you want. I mean, some people did it halfway through the year when you see an account that really was running in the deficit. Then you would, in June preliminarily, and then final in September as you close the books and everything is finalized.
So Michael, I was.
Why, was that one or did?
I just wanted to ask, when you build your budget, will you build it off the actuals or the budgeted numbers? Because I think that's a key consideration. If you're going to build it off the actuals, then, then you're really looking at what you needed last year to run the organization. If you're going to build it off the budgeted numbers and they're not adjusted, then you're potentially, you're repeating the error. So I think part of, in the past, you used to do those transfers. When I was on the Chikering Committee, we did them for the purposes of being able to have our budgeted numbers be as close to what we really needed and then where the overages were, we could adjust, but we didn't have to. So it's just another perspective and it just depends how you do it.
So in the most, in the last two cycles, Chris has prepared schedules where we see the actual spending in two fiscal years.
Yes, and that's been really helpful.
Then the budget is this, this current year's budget.
Right.
So, so at that point, in October, this year's budget to build next year's budget is valid a place to start from as any would. But also going back and looking at some of his historical numbers and use that in an informed way. So I think from that standpoint, if we were in a cycle where this was a mid-year number, that might have an impact, but we're only working off of a budget that's only three months, four months of use.
Well, one other thing that we had a discussion with our new accountant, Irene, that this year and other departments, and I think it'd be with the regional school committee as well, to do that, right sizing of the budgets, because there's a number of departments that would just go on basic budgeted numbers each year. So I think to look back and base it on what's actually spent makes a lot of sense. Rather than just budgeting because it's always been budgeted now, I think we really need to right size the budgets on all departments.
I think this group has been doing that. We have the same thing happening in Dover where we're trying to get people to remember they have actuals and those are numbers they can use to inform their estimates and, you know, to really stress and think a little bit about it more carefully.
In particular, where there's at least one item here that we know was not and would not be used.
Who are we talking about, the trans, are we back to transportation then?
No, no, I don't have a transportation.
Oh, oh, I got it, yeah.
You know what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
So, where.
So what I, what I've heard is there is a desire to have the formal vote in October with that schedule of transfers. On agenda item four.
Well, no. So what I want to know is, for Bill and Hans, when we give our packets and we read our packets and if we have questions, do you want us to email you if you sort of have to?
Yes. Yes, I think that's a helpful practice. Yes, that would be very helpful.
And then.
And can I just say, practice is good to see each other.
Absolutely.
It's your head some sentiment.
I was about to ask.
Yes, sorry. Um, and in particular, you talked a little bit about your cover memo. Um, I know there's a lot of detail we've had sometimes before, but I think some of that overview is helpful, not necessarily for us, but to those people reading the packets online or other advisory and finance committee members who may not be at the meetings, um.
Frankly, it's helpful for me.
Yeah.
And I could read a spreadsheet if you forced me to, but I actually, actually much prefer to read your summary of it, yeah.
It does not have to be a text, you know, I mean, graphics are fine. That was my thought, I don't know.
No, I'm glad you were a bit of a concern.
So you're, so building off of what Hans did prepare. I just want to be dead acknowledge.
Toward that end, toward that end, and before we get to number four, I did want to quickly make sure that I made note of the format, the agenda format change. So it's different than what you've seen in the past. And what will happen if you, if you're adamantly opposed to this format as a group and want us to return, I have no problem doing that. But you can provide that feedback to Michael if you'd like. And then, but the way that will work is each agenda item will have a cover memo that just generally describes what that agenda item is about and then backup material will be attached to it.
I am going to the packet very easy.
Yeah.
It's a September meeting.
So while we're on that, are we having students? I know this is with the.
Right, so, so I can talk about that when we get to their reports. Just as a means of keeping meeting moving forward.
So moving now on the agenda item four. And revisiting budget planning and general. Anything new to discuss above and beyond what we did on Thursday night? I've engaged Claire on making sure of that. Hoping things that she thinks we may miss in our. I've engaged Claire on making sure of the open, hoping things that she thinks we may miss in our regional online meetings, I'm going through the agenda items, past meetings to make sure then we're identifying topics that are best taken in a K-12 joint school committee session for those additional meetings that we've got planned during the ball and stuff. Michael, what first tech things did you?
So I go back to, I do think the regional school committee meeting will need a meeting before our meeting with Warren and Advisory in February. Because we need to be comfortable with the numbers and where we're at.
And?
When that is, I have no idea.
We're hearing the other snippet that would be useful as well. So we're still financing that piece and open to whatever is the right way to get our budgets successfully to be taken into, I mean, during this year.
First two meetings listed, those are at Dover Ward or Sherburne Advisory?
In which?
On this, the first two RSC meetings listed, October fourteenth, October twenty-first.
Those are we will be, we will be the traveling team.
Okay.
And they're coinciding with the same nights as our elementary school counterparts.
We don't have a meeting scheduled for the twenty-first. So we don't have a meeting scheduled for the twenty-first.
That's the truth of it.
So. And our suggestion now, apparently you too.
Which, where's? The second.
The first full date.
So I can go back, we do have a meeting scheduled for the fourteenth. I can go back to my committee and see if everybody's available to move it to the twenty-first.
Well, or are you going to Sherburne on one day and Dover to the other day?
That was the intent in that cycle.
So maybe we just need to add the date to our calendar.
I don't know what their calendar looks like, though.
We have a meeting on the fourth.
They, yeah, they already grabbed the fourteenth.
They already grabbed it, apparently. Okay, I will, I can email my committee and let you guys know.
You gotta move fast.
As long as, I mean, if everybody's available on the twenty-first, we'll move it to the twenty-first. But as of now, we have a meeting on the fourth.
Is that a full regional school committee meeting? No, it's a presentation by the leadership?
I think you are always welcome.
We're always, of course we're always welcome. Which is rather expected.
I was just going to say that the cover memo indicates that you'll find attached a final draft of the operating and capital budget calendar. Given discussions today, and even some leftover discussions from last Thursday, it should read almost final draft. So there are still some dates, for example, under the regional school committee, on the budget and capital planning document. The item capital budget with Sherborne Capital and Advisory, there was still a to-be-determined date, so we need to plug that date in. And clearly, the October twenty-one date. What we did was we took that Wednesday that occurred last year, that's how that ended up in there. So, but, so we can work on getting that.
I'll email you after I hear from my committee if they're okay with moving the meeting to the twenty-first, then I'll just email you and say, yeah, okay, that's fine.
If not the twenty-first, were you planning on meeting on the twenty-eighth?
We were planning on meeting on the fourteenth. The only meeting we have in October is the fourteenth, because that's around. We could just move that one meeting to the twenty-first, as long as everybody's agreed with that.
Michael, can you add to the deadline for both towns for the text for Warren articles or the Warren article notification form, whatever that form is, in case we have a capital request?
Yeah, that's a good deadline to keep it.
I just thought of that.
So we're waiting for those dates from town hall? Is there a warrant closed date?
Yeah, you are waiting for them, and in fact, we are actually waiting for them this year in our town as well, because we have a new accountant, and there may be a change in some of the, some of the stuff. You know, it's traditional, they wanted the analyzed by December first and the budget by the thirty-first, or, you know, like that. There is some talk in town, and we haven't met yet or even, you know, had the final conversation with the accountant to determine that may actually move up a little bit for us, so that date has been in the past. But I don't, I don't know that, it's just that it's possible.
We're meeting with our accountant next week, well, we're meeting December. Yeah, I think Phil was saying you were out reaching for those dates.
Yeah.
Right.
I think ours are already posted on our website, the dates of the warrants opening. Because I've seen them, if I have them, I would tell you, but they are, they're available.
We'll look further.
Do you want us to send it to you? Would that be helpful?
We can go on the website.
Okay, we'll get covered.
Yeah, thank you.
One more?
Yeah, with regard to the joint meetings, whenever they are held and whatever they consist of, it seems to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, but in the past, most of those joint meetings were dealing with subjects that were, you know, pretty much internal to the school committees, and there wasn't a lot of, I've referred to it as serious business, but of course, that's kind of insulting to people. But I mean, you know, town business that was conducted there. And that seems to have changed, where the joint committee in the summer did their reorder of the bid, and then at the last, the one last week, the joint committee there, this calendar was agreed to by the, more or less agreed to by the school committee. So I guess what I'm saying is, if those joint committees are going to become sort of, we have the local school committee, we have the regional school committee, and then if the joint school committee meetings are now going to be dealing with business that is of more general interest to the towns, if we can get a packet published at the same length of time prior to the meeting, that would be great.
I think that that has been past practice to have the packets.
They're usually having the packets for the joint, published on line.
Well, you should.
No, we, I'm pretty sure we have.
You absolutely should, they are more important.
They have.
They still get delivered, I'm still a paper person, but I still.
Well, the last, the one was, the one for nine-three was published on nine-two.
Yes, we have had some startup.
I mean, I'm not criticizing, I'm not criticizing that, I'm just saying, for the future.
Like, so much of this summer has been to get a handle on the superintendency search.
Right. I understand.
And transitions, and we have been following them more real-time.
Not complaining.
Yeah, I anticipate that the packet will follow the same timeline as the regular meetings for the joint meeting, unless, for example, it's a specific superintendent search packet, and that may be, the timeframe may be a little shorter, depending on what's happening with that process at the time.
It just, those joint meetings have shifted a little bit, I wanted to go.
I think there's a conscious goal that we're trying out this coming year. If we're going, let's say, through educational outcomes, M-PAS, whatever, or anything related to our goals, then we're trying to do that in a joint meeting setting so that everyone hears the same information, it all has to be presented once, and we all benefit from having continually more of a K-12 perspective. And we try to only find very limited district-specific business for these meetings that are off-cycle, or sometimes it may require a deeper dive for one particular school building or in our case, buildings that would be picked up later on in a, you know, in a school committee on itself. Again, we're trying, the goal of this is to make sure that we build a K-12 philosophy that we're able to present ourselves, that we're doing that through the search process, and then we find out that some things aren't working as well as they used to, then I think everyone's open to making corrections as we go.
Only because you used the phrase, there is no joint committee, there is a joint meeting of the three committees.
Right, whatever. I was saying, not a complaint, just a suggestion going forward.
Yeah, I think, I think there would be, yeah, and that would be posted in printed packets wherever it is. So now we have to go to the central office.
Thank you, thank you, Michael. So under reports, and I would note that as we move forward, under the report, agenda item, what will be listed there will be reports from people who will actually be in attendance. And then under communications would be communications or reports that are being sent to the school committee where members are not present, or not members, but where our staff are not present. So Mrs. Green is not here tonight, but her report is included under this agenda item. And so what we anticipate happening is that you have our copies of our full report, and what I will do and what Karen will do tonight is to just highlight some pieces from that report, so we're not just reiterating everything that you've already read in writing. And perhaps more importantly, certainly in regards to the headmaster reports, those will be posted on each school's individual website, and they will, the headmasters will communicate with parents to let them know that their full report is online and available for parents and community members to review and go and read their full report. The effort here is to, especially at the high school and middle school level, our headmasters and our administrators are, are, are all kinds of events all through the year. When we can minimize the need to be at an evening meeting, I'd like to do that. Having said that, looking and looking ahead, there'll be plenty of meetings when Mr. Smith and Mr. Kelly, I'm sure, will be present. And then the last piece is, Mr. Smith and I will be sitting down to talk about the student representative, and we want to be able to, we don't want to lose that aspect of the regional committee meetings. So we want to figure out how to make that work, so it's most effective.
So, Bill, if I can, so the default assumption that you're operating under is that unless there is a need for Scott or John to be here, they won't be here?
Correct. And as we go through, for example, tonight, if you have specific questions from the reports, what I would ask you to do is bring them up, if I can answer them, I will. If not, John and Scott will then provide answers after the fact.
So one of the, if I can, one of the things that, first of all, I think it's quite mandatory, because I think we have used their time, they've been very generous with their time, and I'm not sure we've always used it well. But there are, I think, a number of agenda items that crop up through the year. I'm thinking of obviously new courses and things like that, but also other things. It's clear that their presence adds a lot to the discussion. I don't know whether it's possible, you guys might be able to figure out whether it's possible, to cluster those discussion items so that we can plan on having them here, rather than seeing what's on the agenda on Thursday or Friday and say, John, Scott, we need you at the meeting. You know, so we would have time, and they would have time to work in.
You know, excellent point, and we'll be working on that as we move forward. You know, it, the model won't work if it ends up just being the first meeting of the year, and they're not here. But again, at the last minute or four days ahead, they find out, oh, I need to be at that meeting. So we're working closely with the headmasters to ensure that when they are here, it's because they really bring value added to whatever the discussion will be. So under superintendent reports, you know, I'm pleased to report that we experienced an excellent opening as described in the report that I provided. I'm just very impressed with the dedication and hard work of our administrative team, our leadership team, our staff, all of our staff. You know, they spent time during the summer, they may not have been in their classrooms, but they spent time during the summer thinking about and preparing for the new school year. Everybody was ready to go. I want to thank, also thank Michael, Adena, and Claire, who were there on opening day. Michael and Adena were part of the agenda, and so that's nice when you have an opportunity to be there. Members get a chance to see the energy and the buzz for staff, especially on the opening day for staff. Again, I'd like to commend the leadership team, all of our administrative assistants, and the custodial and maintenance staff. They really did a superb job in their planning, the way they spent their time this summer getting ready for yet another school year, and really did us a superb job. And our buildings, our four buildings at the region, our two buildings, our campus was in spectacular shape when we opened the school year, so kudos, kudos to them. There was a new staff report that you saw, a listing of new staff at the region. There were twenty-three personnel changes, of those twenty-three, sixteen individuals are new to the district, and all of them participated in an orientation session day the week before school started. And the remaining seven are not new to the district, they're either taking on new roles, expanding roles, or are working part-time at the regional level, where they've worked part-time at the, either in Dover or Sherborne as well. So we're very pleased to welcome our new staff. And in terms of enrollment, October will bring a more full and comprehensive enrollment report based on October one numbers. But I did want to let you know that at the start of the year, enrollments at both the middle school and the high school were slightly above what was projected, so that's good news, seeing the enrollment steady. And again, in October, there'll be a more comprehensive report. Any questions?
Sure, how is class sizes then with a little bump up in enrollment?
You know, I have to be honest with you, I have not looked at the final master schedule and how the scheduling came out in terms of class sizes.
I could talk, and in the high school, there's high numbers in, not only AP classes, but other classes. You know, for us, so that should go across, it's like twenty-three, twenty-four, something over twenty. I, I don't know the details, but it's just conversation.
I also wanted to, transferred into a math class, ten people, so it may be a little bit of a, once again, challenges.
But again, last year, we talked about how do we, how do we help those classrooms or those teachers? And I think, Karen, I don't remember what we did, but there was some way we assisted some of those classrooms last year, basically.
Well, we added a, we added time for math teacher and a science teacher. Right, to decrease those numbers, but that's all my recollection is.
So I'll work with the high school administrative staff to get a sense of, a better sense of that.
Just curious.
Yeah, but to be clear, when we say the enrollments are slightly higher, it's by five or six kids over what was projected. So I'd like to find out what the assumptions were around class size going into the year, based on what the projections were.
So our October or November meeting packets, you will have historically seen a class size analysis for both the middle school and the high school, so that would be something that would be brought up.
Okay.
We look at it as part of the budget.
Sure, yeah, yeah. No, I've always done a comprehensive class size.
It's due to the building leaders, they've prepared that before. So I don't think it'll be a surprise if I didn't.
Okay, good. Okay, if no further questions, I'd ask Dr. Luke to land.
So I wanted to echo Bill's conversation about the work that happened over the summer with our educators and with our leadership team in order to prepare for that, a learning that happened within moments of the students returning, the excitement was palpable. But one thing that did happen was the mentoring and induction program. We welcomed the educators that Bill refers to, led by Callie Egan, where we actually paired the new educators with their mentors and spent some time talking about what the year's going to look like. what the year's going to look like and planning out what supports those new educators needs. That was an important part of it. And then the superbly narrated DS Reality, thus to a what a hoot. We actually went around, pulled Dover and Sherburne, we saw all the geographic areas, the points of interest, like great places to have lunch from Pond and Sherburne, Channing Pond to Dover. It was phenomenal. The Dover Demon and the Sherburne, oh, blast, I can't remember. I can't remember where it was, but I mean, Callie Egan did a phenomenal job. So that professional development that happens for our new educators, plus that coupled with the professional development that our our current educators engage helps to support our students during the school year. Follow us on Twitter. It's something that I have been tweeting, but I see what happens. There's a picture of the new educator orientation, you know, a picture of the school buses here at the age. Also follow @DSHeadmaster. I did not realize John Smith had, he's owned for the high school, DS Raiders Sports and DS Finals. So in an effort to increase our communication in real time, instead of waiting for the school committee reports or the weekly newsletters and e-blasts, you can see the live feed for the Dover Sherburne schools is posted to the Dover Sherburne website, so you can see this one. I encourage you to look and send me things you'd like to tweet.
Are you going to be using that for school cancellations?
I will, if I...
I'm just thinking you could get a thousand followers if you were.
I can, I can, yes. Soon as I get the call, I'll tweet it. So thank you very much.
Actually, question. Bill, you probably know, Karen, you're intimately familiar with the professional development committee that... Is that committee ongoing, or is that process now at the point at which it's launched? Where does that stand? And I bring that up just because you talked a little bit about professional development.
It is ongoing. We meet every other month. It's representatives from each of the four buildings and the administration. And we talk about what types of professional development are needed. From a district point of view, a lot of conversation about what's required for educators. Shelter Englisher, who has spoken about what we tell here. We'll actually bring up the topic of mentor training at one of our first ones, because that's something that surfaced over the summer. The professional development handbook.
I may be talking about something different, and that was, this is the committee that was considering the tripod program and the CPOs.
Teacher evaluation.
Thank you. That's not professional. Sorry. Different subject, again.
You know, Bill and I have had a conversation about that, and given the fact that we're piloting the tripod surveys, grades six through 12 will be developed around K through five, that there are some changes, that that will probably continue at least three times this year.
Okay, good. Because it seems as though there were some very important initiatives that were right on the cusp, and I wanted to make sure that there was company there.
And the fact that we had chosen Pathway 3, where there are two student learning goals for each educator in a professional practice school, plus the district determined measures, which I've spoken about, length and alcohol common measures, and how that language then melts more easily with what Dover Sherburne is and had already been doing. I think it's important. And that committee comprised school committee members from each of the three districts, educators, DSEA, the union representation, administrators, and the superintendent assistant.
Thanks.
So I have the timing down. Tripod will be integrated into this year's performance reviews or evaluations?
It will be one piece of evidence.
Yeah.
Yes.
So that'll be new this year?
Yes.
We didn't do a test of tripod at the end of last year at all.
We actually did for tripod, there was one educator per building who piloted tripod, but we also piloted the panorama surveys with multiple educators K through 12. And then made a informed decision in that educator evaluation subcommittee to go with tripod grades six through 12 and our own crafted survey K through five.
Great, thank you. Great.
Do we have any highlights for Terry, or?
Just the report speaks for itself. Unless there are any questions.
So my one question is, in the past, we had, the, last year, the year of the 4 changes. We usually got a resume of the people, what their addresses were blocked out, just so we could see people's backgrounds.
Oh, okay.
I just want to consider that, because, you know, the name on the paper is nice, but...
Sure.
What did, I'm sure we have great teachers coming through as well, kind of.
Okay, great.
On the other reports, part of communication, topic six, I think what we're going to try out now is, again, reprocess, so we at least at this meeting, we have an obvious absence of younger members of our community here and the building leaders. Did people have any questions or comments or community or group notes? Or either they've been excluded in the next call?
And this agenda item will be a recurring item on the agenda, and there may be times when there's a variety of communications that are really for your information, that we may not necessarily talk about, but think that they may be helpful or useful for you to have or to review for perhaps further agenda items that may come further down the road, or just for your knowledge.
So, can we talk about athletics? I always spend a lot of time on athletics at the district. These are participants that tried out, not necessarily made teams, because I know the golf team is smaller than thirty. Are we, and I think, oh, I have other report, participation rates. So we'll get more on this next month.
Yes.
And I understand there was some freshmen saw those team issues and those kinds of things, so... It's, John usually addressed that in his report, but we have some feedback on that, on what's worked, what hasn't worked, what have we learned, especially as we have a new athletic director. It might be good at some point for Jeff to come to one of our meetings.
Yeah, the process I've used in the past is that typically in October, you know, there's a written report that goes into a little more detail about participation numbers and participation rates. And then what I have done is had the athletic director come back, perhaps at a December meeting after the close of the fall season, and do a more, where he's actually at the meeting, providing a more comprehensive report that would detail, you know, the successes and maybe perhaps challenges of the individual teams, awards and honors were earned, and some opportunity at that time for the committee to recognize perhaps, you know, league champions or all-stars or whatever. Yeah. You have a question?
Do we actually have separate boys and girls cross-country teams? If so, why? It's not a context for it. I assume they could just as well do this co-ed?
You should know the answer, Mr. Rocco.
It's just a team, but they race separately.
I think, yeah.
No, they do race.
What is in the paper about results and the boosters?
No, it makes sense that they would race separately. I'm just curious whether they're coached separately and whether there's some redundancy there.
I think it's an overlap. I think the two countries, there's...
Thank you.
But I think that, um, you could phrase it as just a one with the boys and just no one with the girls.
I would hope not.
And I think the pasta dinners are separate and together.
One.
That was not a Title IX violation. You just go with them there.
Yeah, no, it is not. No, typically, my experience has been is that the girls and boys in cross-country compete separately. They follow a similar schedule. Sometimes they travel together. But it depends on the league. You know, sometimes it's, depending on the league, if there's high participation, you know, the girls' team may be home while the boys' team is away. They may be competing against the same high school. I'm not, I don't know what happens here, but it piqued my interest, so I will find out. Perhaps the reason for athletic report.
And the other communication thing is, so when we have links, and these are posted as PDFs, links don't work. So like this YouTube video and Scott's report.
They should work. You can make a PDF.
It depends on your...
Anyway, I don't...
We'll make sure that whatever is posted, and just because you receive it as a PDF doesn't mean that it has to be posted on the website as a PDF, because they have the original Word document that they can post themselves, and make sure that that happens. But there is a way. We'll make sure they are working them.
And do we need to vote on that? Oh, this is clear.
Right.
You are getting it, so. Any other elements of this new format, the middle school report?
I could just add...
Well, I was just going to say, one of the nice things about having Scott here, not that he should be here, is that he tells us who's done this nice artwork that's been posted here. It would be nice in the future. I hope this will continue. If we just get a note, we could read into the record of what we're looking at, because it's always nice to see.
I was just going to say, I hope that we can have the students come back. They really add a fun perspective to the meetings. Maybe that could be something that they could have on, instead of having Scott, the student that comes in and handle the art.
Art has been...
Thank you.
Excellent. Now we're on to the consent agenda. The case that got in was last year. I just rattled through the items and the things that needs further discussion, to say so. First item is going to be the approval of our regional school committee meeting minutes from June 1. Another one from the summer.
Yes.
Second, I assume there's no holes on that. Then the second item is going to be an obsolescent declaration from the technology department. The third is acknowledgement of a donation for the high school soccer team and several high school field trip requests.
So on the athletic one, usually, um, we say what the total dollar donation is. I don't know how many.
The which, Karen, sorry?
I'm not going to hold up tonight, but just going forward, there's a, there's a unit cost.
Oh, the donation, yeah. Yeah, presumably.
Presumably it's more than one suit.
To be shared.
That would be shared among the seventies, boys, women.
And the DC trip is the same as we always have?
It is the same. Just on the DC trip, on the letter from Mr. Bork, the trip is actually scheduled for October 2015. There's a typo on the letter that he provided.
We're referring to the high school trip, not the middle school trip.
And then, have we done one of them?
Yep.
May I have a motion on our consent agenda?
I move we approve the items on the consent agenda.
Awesome.
All in favor? All votes.
And thank you to the, the top one, the, the board.
Yes. And thank you to the, I don't want to get their name wrong, Hazelwood family for the donation.
So now is the planning for next month, number one meeting? So some of the agenda items that Landor reports have already on topic is the enrollment technology plan, first pass on capital, the fall athletics report that Bill mentioned. And then the question I have would be, are we going to move assessment reports and outcome measures to a joint committee meeting, so that all committees can then go with that at once?
We could certainly do that. The, this report will address regional, some of the high school scores. So the assessment reports would include SAT and AP testing. ACT.
ACT two. And while those, you'll see the K-12, look at MCAS by English, Math, and Science. I think it just gives you a vertical view. So I do think separate is important.
A better use of that term.
So there are two issues. I mean, one issue is, I think you're probably right. The other part of that issue is whether there's something to be gained by hearing the, for us, the elementary reports. You know, until I've heard one, I won't know the answer to the question. I'm not sure that that demands that they do it.
As I thought on last year, that was in the...
Yeah, I mean, that's, we could just get it on paper, and that might, that might, then I could find out if I'm actually interested.
What I would propose between now and when we have finalized this meeting is I will check in with Dawn and Pam as well. We're still trying to work out.
I was going to say, I think the granularity of the report at our level is probably such that it would spend an awful lot of time for the elementaries that they don't want to spend.
So I, well, in, in, in past, I've not necessarily sensed that we've had much of a kind of that higher level overview. Yeah, we provided the data, you know, and asked questions. So again, I'm hoping as we evolve to more of, again, joint meeting environment, that outcome reports, assessment reports, could have an approach that says, okay, these are the key, these are the things that everyone should be aware is either a very positive trend or potentially, you know, troubling trend that we're, and these are the actions that we're focusing on. Because I, to me, that ties back to our goal, our goals, our curriculum in nature. So outcome measures are one of the things that we can start to make those connections.
So Michael, if I can, so I remember, and it was probably at this point five years ago, I know with you and Claire, no, we had a middle school report in which it seemed as though there were some very important discrepancies between the, what was being tested and what was being taught. And it led to what I think was a very important discussion and some, and some changes. I don't know if we're going to find that. I hope, I hope we won't. I mean, I hope we find that everything's hunky-dory. But the, the opportunity for a discussion at that level, I think, is important for us to be able to have. And I, I think I would feel a little bit as though I were borrowing somebody else's time if the elementaries were, were in that meeting at the same time. They're obviously public meetings, and they're welcome, but I'm just not sure that it's, at the level at which it's...
Vice versa, Richard. It means elementary, so there's been historical issues. I mean, elementary isn't a good use of our time.
So I think, I think a report to us about elementary and vice versa is a good idea for that K-12 perspective, but I, I think probably having the time for the sort of discussion that we may want to have probably belongs here. That would be my recommendation.
Okay.
Anything?
So one item transfers and class size reports is other October, other December.
We should hear, I hope, about the wastewater treatment facility and how it's doing on passing its...
All right.
Behind colors.
Good, okay. That's all I wanted to know. Oh, good, all right. Good, okay. That's all I wanted to know. Oh, good, all right.
It met target every single month.
All right. Then we needn't bring it up again.
Yeah, let's just assume everything is fine.
Well, exactly. I mean, I was just looking at...
Anything comes up, we'll report by exception, exactly.
We've never had that situation in how many years?
I know.
I'm quite happy to be passed.
Good looking in the rearview.
I'm just thinking what that agenda item would be called.
WWTF.
It was WWTF. We don't know about it because we would never...
We all, we all know exactly what it is.
Anything else?
Not yet.
I was, feel free in the next couple of weeks to shoot. And there's that part of making sure we have continuity is on going back to passing standards. It's pretty helpful checking into things as, even though Bill had his copy, I had mine, they don't get the details on that.
That's good.
Great. Did you get one of those? Was I the only one blessed to get a copy of the school planning and management? Maybe I am, okay. I assumed it was in my role as Catholic. Oh, because it's got my name on it, that's why. Oh, but it's addressed to the school board president. Sorry, Michael, this is you. No, actually, why don't Lori and I hold on to it because it's potentially interesting.
Second sign.